Any damages due to failure notification. And C also says in the case of water being turned off on private property for any reason is listed in above for family resident or multifamily residential units where there are persons residing, owner or person in control of the property shall abide by the above notice provision in all circumstances. So it says it for the city, also multifamily residential units.
Councilman Jones.
I move that we approve ordinance number two zero two zero zero two two four zero zero three.
Second.
It's been properly moved and seconded that ordinance number two zero two zero dash zero two two four dash zero zero three. An ordinance of the city council of the city of Prairie, Texas, admitting the city's code of ordinances, repealing in part, chapter thirteen utilities, article thirteen point five zero zero utility service provider regulations, section thirteen point five two one and thirteen point five two two, providing for a penalty, providing a savings clause, and providing for severability. You've heard the motion, ready for discussion?
I have one question concerning. On section three, this goes back to what we just discussed in reference to penalty, they're just add. So they would go, so then they would go to section one.
One point one on it.
All but a question.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Suppose have the same right? The record shows it's unanimous, motion passed. A quick question, counselor, on thirteen point five two two C, the second line, where it touches multifamily residential units. We have many former single family homes that are rented by the room. Would that be covered here, or do we need to add that to protect mostly students that rent those as well? So we have some power over that landlord as well. Because we have often we've got students renting by the room, but I don't know if that's considered a single family based on the dwelling.
Well, it's the use.
Or multifamily.
It's the use of the property versus the zoning of the property that you're looking at in this ordinance.
Okay, so that would be covered because it's used for a multi.
Yes.
Good enough. Item eighteen, discuss considering possible action on amendment during election agreement with Waller County election administrator, days of the week for early voting. Counselor Wallace.
Yeah, so this comes from having a discussion with Ms. Chrissy Eaton and the attorney. So the thing was, at last meeting, we elected to put the Memorial Student Center in addition to the four different locations that the county has. But a little confusion came because House Bill one eight eight eight, it also does apply to local elections as well, so whatever location we choose to add, it will be for all set, it'll be for all early voting. And the last meeting, we had it only, we were saying only three days, but with House Bill one eight 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 eight, that's impossible. So if we're gonna do Memorial Student Center, it has to be open for all early voting. So I think that needs to be clear. There needs to be clarity on that, not just for us, but also for the citizens in the community to know that. But the same four as well within the county, those are also safe for early vote as well, which was the Waller County Community Center, Brookshire Convention Center, Waller ISD Admin Building, the Waller County Annex Road and Bridge Building.
So has that been incorporated, counsel, or we need to?
Yeah, so the very last page should be, well, it might have stapled it differently. There's an attachment eight which has it on there. And it has been incorporated by not adding the limited days of the week.
Counselor Adams.
I move that we approve the amendment joint election agreement with Waller County election administrator, days of the week for early voting. You've heard the motion, ready for discussion?
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Let the record show it's unanimous. Motion passed. Item nineteen, discuss and take action on further amendments to November twenty fourth, two thousand and fifteen agreement with Bureau Veritas to extend building official duties and related fees for an additional period of sixty days. This is just continuing on. Now, I do believe counsel.
Did you sign up for building inspector?
You had something to try to hire someone in place of this temporary thing.
Nineteen.
Bureau Veritas, am I right?
Yes, Attorney Griffin. I sent you the job announcement. And. It should be in everyone's packet.
I'm sorry, Inspector.
Yeah.
We're actually.
Yeah.
Looking at the amended agenda where number nineteen is Bureau Veritas.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes.
Has there, I just had three questions. One, was there increase in cost or has always been fifty to eighty?
It's always been, it's the same.
Then the second thing is, could I ask that this, that when we move, that when we amend this, will we amend this to seventy-five days instead of sixty?
I think that's, is on the agenda, would that be appropriate?
That's, so.
From sixty days to seventy-five.
Okay, so I apologize. Maybe Councilmember Williams was gonna address that because they weren't completely separated. The building inspector RFP was the reason we were extending this. So, so that, that may have been how long it's gonna take. Is that the concept?
Yes, but we're extended because the contract expired.
Yes, but I'm just saying the sixty days to seventy-five is because it's gonna take that long to get an RFP.
Because we was gonna end up pulling it back. So the question is, we have sixty on here, can we put seventy-five without a issue?
Yes, absolutely. Yeah, just.
It's on the agenda, it's changing today.
Absolutely, yeah, you can just amend the, in the motion to approve, yeah.
Okay.
Most understanding question?
Mr. Mayor.
Yes, Counselor Adams.
I move that we approve the further amendment to November twenty-fourth, two thousand and fifteen agreement with Bureau Veritas to extend building official duties and related fees for an additional period of seventy-five days.
Second, it's been properly moved and seconded that counsel approved the further amendment to November twenty-fourth, two thousand and fifteen agreement with Bureau Veritas to extend building official duties and related fees for an additional period of seventy-five days. First, let's, you've heard the motion, ready for discussion?
Question.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Suppose have the same right? Let the record show it's unanimous. Discuss and take action on putting out an RFP for building inspector, Counselor Williams.
Uh, Mr. Mayor, that is the one that prior to the council considering that Mr. Lever.
Oh, yes, sir. Come on up, Ms. Frank. Thank you for my name.
I just, our question is, I just wanna get an understanding.
Sure.
Of the RFP, that's request for a proposal? So are we looking for, are you, your question a proposal? Are you feeling a position for a building inspector?
We're feeling, uh, we're filling a position through the RFP process.
So you have, you have to do a proposal? I'm asking the question, do you have to do a proposal to do it? Or an application?
So that's what this item is about, for them to discuss? It depends on how they do it.
Well, unless the clar, that's the clarification I'm asking. Are you, are you putting a proposal out? I mean, are you putting out?
It's on agenda to discuss how and what.
Oh, okay. Well, it says propose, the RFP, request for a proposal. So it didn't say, I mean, it didn't say discuss, it said request for an RFP.
Well, that's the discussion part.
Okay.
Thank you, Doc. Yes, Counselor Williams?
Uh, yes, this was a job that I sent, then myself and Councilman Jones had been talking about working on for quite some time. And I went to both cities, Waller and instead, just to get some input from their current inspectors that they have as for job duties. And one of the ones that Kylie Kilpatrick said was very, very important, for a building inspector to have somebody here when Bureau Veritas is not available, is that person needs to be the one to approve all permits and give out all permits. And he said we can look at, you know, full time or part time, it was up to us. And so I developed the job announcement, and I brought it back last time to the city council, and we hadn't made any changes that they wanted to make. Add, take away, what have you. And then possibly for us to get someone in, because when Bureau Veritas is not here, then things get dropped, then things don't happen. And so we need somebody that's in-house, whether we decide to hire them full time or part time.
Yes, my, again, we have been talking about this for some time. I would, do we have a specific kind of job range? I mean, not job range.
Salary.
Salary range. Currently, right now, if you, if you do the math, on the current with Bureau Veritas, and they're a little on the high end, but they have the capacity, it's about sixty-three thousand three hundred and sixty dollars. And so the question is, and that's for a part-time. So the question is, we have to get in our mind kind of what direction we wanna go in. And I think the job announcement that Counselor Williams and Counselor Jones have put together is good. We just gotta get a salary range, because again, we're paying the sixty-three thousand based on part-time work. They just kinda have the capacity, so we would also need to make sure we have funds moving forward in the budget for Mr. Johnson.
The budget amount is thirty-eight six?
So we need a legislative amendment, but first we need to see that we have the funding.
You guys said you got the funding, but the budget amount is thirty-eight six.
So that's what's good.
And so I guess the second question, I guess a follow-up.
Mm-hmm, go ahead.
Can we, I want us, before we hire the person full-time, that we really go into differentiating between what Bureau Veritas does in their inspection piece that connects to what we want our building inspector to do, because they're different. And right now, we're paying, they're connected, so we're kinda paying them to kinda go back and give you something that, that necessarily they did kinda at the beginning. Just so we can flow, what exactly is, is it that you like to see? So you said? So, so for, in our process, Bureau Veritas has their checklist that we approved that they're using for a building. So you like the checklist for our building?
Clearly defined roles between Bureau Veritas and.
Right, and the connection. So like, one through five is Bureau Veritas does that part. The building inspector, if they're only getting a permit, so if they're, so we're now, it's gonna take this role that currently is being done by Ms. Cortez? Or, or she's assembling the things, and I don't know who's, the mayor's doing it, or, well, right now Bureau Veritas is doing it, but they get the packet. And then disseminate to the engineer, public works, that process, that will be the building inspector, which means if we're saying a permit application or that process wouldn't move until the inspector tou, touched it.
Right.
Well, the word inspection is used quite a bit, and that's exactly what Bureau Veritas is doing. So I don't know if this needs to be adjusted because it references international building codes, and that's what Bureau Veritas handles from start to finish.
Yeah, and Ms. Cortez, Ms. Cortez has shared that she no longer wants to be involved with the permanent, permit process.
She's uncomfortable with doing it, and she's uncomfortable with the whole process. So that's not something that she wants to have on her plate as a responsibility for her to do. Because she doesn't think she's qualified to do that as far as the permits are concerned.
And then the permits are a good thing, absolutely, because we're getting all sorts of them and having to read these plans and plaits and things like that. But the inspection part of this does indeed cross over quite a bit with what we're paying Bureau Veritas for from site plan initial review to completion.
Right, and so you need to decide in this process, are you going out for RFPs for inspection services in whole? Are you going out for RFPs for inspection services in part to be backed up by a part-time employee? And if so, the way that this particular job description is written, they would need their plumbing certification in order to be able to inspect. And so that, it would be, you know, not just a clerical part-time position. So that's kind of what your discussion needs to focus around, is what are you looking to fill and how?
So I guess it's the connection between what Mr. Lever was talking about and what we were talking about. When we say RFP, we're talking about going out for new services instead of using Bureau Veritas. When we were trying to supplement, because right now we have Bureau Veritas doing inspection piece part one, and then we have them acting as the building official, which I guess if we remove the inspector part and we put the building official, but can we do that if our, what's his name says it's the mayor?
Well, so if, if a position is created to be filled, there was still answer to the mayor. He's the administrative head of the city under your charter. But it depends on how, whether or not you separate it out, like, like right now you have it all over here with Bureau Veritas for all the actual inspections. And they have it part-time, and I don't know if they can complete them all, or they don't have time to complete them all. Or if you want another thing, either Bureau Veritas or someone like them to be able to reapply and resement for a new contract, because it's been a while. Or if you wanna wholly switch to an employee on site, or do a combination. Any of those are appropriate ways to do it.
I guess I have two questions. I have to deal with money. Mr. Mayor, you may know, right now, Mr. Johnson, you said thirty-eight six, and what we'd have for this employee? If we were to transition, like, so I know we get money to pay Bureau Veritas based on fees.
Right.
What is the amount of fees that we, that we could collect from Bureau Veritas that would supplement a licensed person and maybe an assistant for the entire year? So like, you should know how much.
We have a fifteen percent add-on, I think that's, because it's not set.
Well, no, 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 I'm saying, it's not set, but we know how much was, we paid to Bureau Veritas. So there's an amount. So let's say that amount is a hundred thousand dollars. We now know how much it's gonna, it'll cost us to get one person who's certified, and then maybe an assistant in the office that could do what we're saying, that would report to Prairie every day. And so, do you have that number, Mr. Johnson? Was it, did we pay Bureau Veritas? And we know pay them as a pass-through with a fifteen percent markup, but it's still a number, a direct number that we can use in our conversation.
Well, the Bureau Veritas thing is, is a little diff, it's a fifteen percent add-on. But the caliber of folks and licensing of folks that they sometimes have running throughout the city, almost at the same time checking on different projects. Even some of their people have licenses and some of the others don't, things like that. Because I remember Chris Haywood, when he came in, he didn't have his plumbing, you know, certification, I think he's got it now. But I, I don't think we would consider, because we had a two-hundred-something thousand dollar check on Flochem by itself. So I know we wouldn't consider that piece, but their skills on that is.
Thing I want to bring to y'all's attention is this, is currently, and, and once it's the dog, you have a person that's budgeted at thirty thousand, that's Ms. Cortez, she does primarily permits. The building official is an additional thirty-six thousand. So if that position can be merged as one.
No, she doesn't primarily do permits.
Well, but.
Ms. Cortez accepts a lot of building and that stuff.
I understand that, but you, you got this haze also. I'm just saying, if, if it's a possibility, I don't know if it's a possibility or not, you can take some of that salary. And I know, I've talked with the city secretary on trying to understand the permit. And we do have to do some more research on that, because we, we don't clearly understand the, all of the steps involved in, once they come in for a permit, and then what takes place to get to Bureau Veritas before the inspections go. But we plan to do some analysis on that. And so if, if we could just have some more time to, so we could get a clear understanding of how the process work.
I wouldn't, I wouldn't want us to, so, so understand what we know. We wanna, wanna, it's enough already, we already have, it's a lot of work, so we would need, if we brought in a person, we'd also need a office person to do what Ms. Cortez does in addition to. Do you have the amount of money that we've paid to Bureau Veritas?
Well, Bureau Veritas, what we have was budgeted for permits.
Okay, that's fine.
And that right there is ninety-six thousand dollars.
All right, so now, the reason, let me make sure, that's the following. What is that ninety-six for?
Uh, that right there is what we have budgeted for permits, with ninety-six, but we had one come in, two hundred.
Two hundred, that's what I'm saying, so that's, that's almost like our fifteen percent by itself.
That was one that we, we had, we had known was gonna take place, Flochem, that was Flochem.
But, but we've had others that weren't two hundred, but were one hundred or fifty on one project. Because see, what Bureau Veritas does is they take a look at the size and scope of what you're building, and they have a calculation to arrive at.
Well, yeah, right, right.
So with these big things that we have building, each of them, I mean, two of them could hit ninety-six by themselves.
But if you just look at, if you look at the financial through January for permitting, I can tell you what we've experienced through January.
What page?
Uh, page five.
From October one to January?
Right. And this includes a big from Bureau Veritas, two hundred eighty-one thousand, eight eighty-two versus a, a budget of only thirty-two thousand. And that's primarily due to the Flochem.
Yes.
The big ones that came in from Flochem.
So. Yes, Counselor Adams.
So I guess, just for clarification, Bureau Veritas gets paid, the city acts as a pass, we get a check from the developer, the city passes that check to Bureau Veritas. Do we, do we write, Bureau Veritas, one check is the building inspector and the building official, or do we send them a check for their responsibility as the building official, and then a check for what they do?
No, we've been doing, thank you for one.
Just their inspection fee. Now, the building official thing, we've been paying fifty, fifty-two hundred dollars a month for it, that's separate. That's not even more than that. That's what we doing a contract for. So, yeah, separate.
I haven't seen those.
So that does, there comes that voice.
Oh, yeah.
But no, I, I.
They stop when they don't get paid.
Well, I had to look at some invoices, but I, I, right now, I don't know if I've seen a separate invoice for that. But we, we're looking to see, I, I haven't seen one.
Only thing I, I was trying to introduce for us to think about is that if there's a certain amount of money that we already budget for fees and permits, if we took the same process and we, if we're gonna bring on a, two people to work in that department or to work in that space, this is what we could use. I, but I, I really think that we, before we move forward, we need to get a handle on what roles do we want the building official person to do? Because Bureau Veritas does one specific thing, and then they have other add-ons. Like, remember they were doing the sprinklers and the water thing, and they, they outside contracted. So we would also be, have, be able to have to offer those services. And then the second piece is that, again, the things that we just passed in the Bureau Veritas scope work attached to, we just wanna make sure that, that we have a clear delineation of what we want that person to do. But again, this is a good start, I guess we just need to figure out, is it our intent to fully divorce ourselves? Because then we would need to work on how much money are available, money is available to actually do that? Or are we do, are we saying we just want to bring someone in to get a handle on the building official capacity while having Bureau Veritas do the inspection process until we get the inner workings together, and then we move forward? But again, I was just trying to make clarity, so.
The, the shortfall that we've had is someone in the office who can interface with, read these plans, know if we need the, well, the plaits and replats trilogy's been handling that. But when someone comes in and there's a need to know, does it go to planning and zoning? You know, all of this type of stuff, that's what Bureau Veritas has kinda been doing in office in the interim. So if we have someone in the office who's helping with that before it goes out to be built and approved, I'm not sure what that person would, would be called, but that's where the real shortfall is, that's kinda overwhelming right now with so much activity.
So this is a little, maybe a little random of a question, but where would we put two more people? I guess it's random, but I think it's, we're talking about hiring two people, and we don't have, we don't have the office space for the people that currently have.
All right, so, Councilman Rowley, just to make sure I have the check was done. Salary range, either that's part-time or full-time, clearly define roles compared to what Bureau Veritas is already doing? Is it right? All right, thank you.
And then if we.
And then if we're gonna, if we're gonna move away from Bureau Veritas, or have somebody work under the umbrella of Bureau Veritas?
Okay, no problem. Thank you.
Anything else on item four, you count, Counselor Wallace?
The mayor does say take action, but we're not gonna take any action. I'll move to, I'll move to the next.
I move that we move, I move that we table, discuss and take actions, and put an RFP for building inspector to the next meeting.
It's been properly moved and seconded that item twenty, discuss and take action for RFP for building inspector. We move to the next meeting. You've heard the motion, ready for the discussion? Well, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion passed. Item one, discuss, consider and take action, reading reports, costs, budget, and updates from Trillig Engineering, Bureau Veritas, and USW for compliance with inspection and city code standards, or the city code for standards non-compliance, especially as they relate to life safety and health and safety issues, and attorney recommendations for compliance on Panther Hill Apartments, Campus Edge, and the gates of Prairie. Counselor Rowley.
Good evening, Counselor. As you know, this is an item that we move forward, um, have been moving forward and talking about. I'm not sure why Bureau Veritas is not here or has not submitted anything, and so I wanna definitely have that documented for the record. And, and if we can get an, a letter sent to them, because, you know, we, we pay them on two sides, like what we were just talking about. And for them not to show up or send an email is definitely not a good use of taxpayers' money. So I haven't gotten a report, Mr. Mayor, did Bureau Veritas issue, send you any updated information?
Uh, no, other than the normal things that they send in to the system, I haven't received anything specific to tonight's meeting.
Attorney, did you receive anything in reference to Bureau Veritas?
I did not.
So is that the city secretary? Would you send the letter to Bureau Veritas about this? Could we ask for them to be on, at, at the meeting?
At the next city council meeting?
Well, we, we asked them to be at this meeting, right, and so they didn't send any information, and so again, we, we pay them on two sides, we just talked about it. And so we wanna make sure that they know that, that they need to communicate, specifically since we have something on the agenda that, that they have to. We, we supposed to get information from them. So is that the attorney or the city secretary, do we? I'm trying to see how we make the motion, or does, doesn't the motion need to be?
Are you?
This is the mayor, huh?
Somebody?
The mayor sent a letter to, to Bureau Veritas. Right, that's what he's requesting, right? That says, hey, we requested your, your presence at this meeting. You need to communicate to us either why you wanted to meet, or, or you need to submit information to request, right, that would come in the bag.
Why you wanted to meet, or, or you need to submit information to request, right, that would come in the bag. All right, then we move to B.
Now, question on one, I'm sorry. Does Bureau Veritas issue cease and desist? Because that's what item one says, update to reports from Bureau Veritas on cease and desist order in place for Panther Hill. I know we did one, but I don't, it wasn't done by Bureau Veritas.
We issued it, but Bureau Veritas has the information that, that, that's necessary, that, that was why the cease and desist was ordered, Bureau Veritas defined the, defined that information.
Actually, no. I think that's trilogy on the detention pond? Because we had two things, a detention pond and a swimming pool. Neither one of those was Bureau Veritas, because they were already.
So there were some other things that Bureau Veritas had mentioned that hadn't been done.
Oh, okay.
And we're, and we're saying, that's not the main reason on why the cease and desist was ordered. But we're saying they should have given us an update saying that we, we received this, we didn't receive this, and everything's a go-ahead. So that, it's on here just as a general for anyone who deals with them on a daily to be able to give us any update.
There are some non-compliance orders, Bureau Veritas.
Yeah, there was still some non-compliance on, on the, the, we haven't got the RM, the master plumber letters. We didn't get an email saying that we, that, that we received those. And there was some additional information that Bureau Veritas had doc, documented. To go to B. Uh, B was the update on Panther Hills apartments water bill due to the city of Prairie and amount of.
That's right. You'd signed up on that, you're saying?
Is that enough?
But you signed up on it.
So again, I wanted to bring this to the attention of the mayor, or.
Uh, Mr. Fair, we did have someone sign up for that item, I believe.
You said, you said item six, that's B, that's not six. It said B on there.
Oh, okay, then I'm sorry, this was the right one.
I don't need, I just need to ask a question.
Okay.
Uh, it's an update on Panther Hill Apartments water bill due to city of Prairie in the amount of a hundred thousand dollars. And I hope the discussion is, where's the money? I mean, if they, if they, how do they, how do they, how are they allowed to be built, or have a bill for a hundred thousand dollars? That's, that's my question.
It's fine. So, the Okay. The, uh, history of this goes back at least about twelve months. Um, when they were built and open, it was, uh, around the time in dealing with A few things, including the Texas Ranger investigation here, City Hall and that sort of thing. And then when it was brought to my attention that, uh, they had a building issue, Um, in looking at the history, it showed they had, their meter hadn't been read for about five months. And then, uh, members of the room had quite a few meetings trying to understand it, sort it out. We tried to take the approach that we took historically on anyone, cause they had a lot of leaks. We know that because we had people come complaining, and some of them leaks were actually on the news. Um, but we couldn't quite figure out, and then With the rereads, which, what that is, is when our guys go out and read a meter, And the numbers come back off, we send them back out. We were having so many problems with the readings, that we didn't know where we were with this. Well, long story short, fast, well, go back about six months or, or something like that, I got with, uh, maybe seven, Mr. Bostick, And I was sharing to see if he knew of, a company, because we had issues with several, a big side across the street, just several, Uh, now the H T Jones Elementary, they just kept popping up. So I was looking for a company who audits the water bills, And hoping even with our quick water program, that maybe the professionals in that area could sort this out and tell us where are we. And, uh, Mr. Bostick said that that was something we thought you all could do. Um, Mr., Mr. King, why don't you tell us your experience in trying to do that? Because what, what we're trying to do is there, there's a lot of, they had a lot of requests For leak adjustments, which is a common thing that the city does. These were just bigger.
I think, I think all we even know is if they're paying the bill.
Oh, yeah, they're, well, you're looking, you're looking at a forty-two thousand, two-hundred-and-eighty-dollar check right there. That was after the potential leak adjustments and that sort of thing. But they've been paying bills, as you see, cause the forty-two zeros out. Now, what we have to do, and I spoke to Mr. Bostick about a week ago, Uh, zero, zero, well, we take what they've been paying, and what the leak adjustments, um.
So we made forty thousand dollars of leak adjustments?
No, 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 that's a check, that's a payment.
The bill is eighty-seven.
Well, if you go to page two, Go to page two, and this is something that, again, I've gotta get with the water experts, Because we couldn't put it together.